It is 5:31. I would like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Powers, would you call the roll?
Mayor Cardy.
Here.
Mr. McFoy.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Swine.
Here.
And is there an approval? Can I have a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes from July 16th, 2025?
I like motion. I'll second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Swine?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. McFoy?
Yes.
Mayor Cardy.
Of staying. The minutes are approved. Moving into our communication for this evening, an update from planning and zoning, Mr. Hutchinson.
Yeah, nothing much for tonight, just we do have application already for next month, so we definitely will have a next month meeting. We also just this week, Monday, had our first open house for our comp plan. So it went really well, had great attendance. I think we had near 80 people in attendance. And then we got just today, I believe we're up to 90 online participants, so that was really good. So we'll continue through that process. We'll have another one coming up here this fall. And then we also have some other stakeholder meetings that we have that'll go along with that process, so keep an eye out for updates on that. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. And Ms. McCoy, a VZA update?
We did not have VZA this month. Do we have anything for the... So kind of quiet on that front so far.
Thank you for the update. From council, we are in budget season, so we are working on next year's budget and getting our... The items that we want to see for infrastructure and projects lined out. And also, I attended the Picture Plain City event on Monday, and it was a great event, I thought. Like to hear more public engagement going forward, maybe more Q and A from the residents who are in attendance. And also, we, I sat in on a police officer interview the week before, and so we are in the process of hiring a new officer and potentially putting one through the academy, so that way in 2026, we'll have another officer onboarded. And we also, I also swore in Officer Corey and recently at our last two council meetings ago. So it's been, it's been busy summer here. Want to thank staff for the work on events and keeping the public updated. And again, for those in attendance, our meetings are always the second and fourth Monday of the month, so we have a council meeting coming up this coming Monday. And we are into public comments, so if we have anyone signed in that is, would like to speak, that is not related to the public hearings or any rezoning, this is the time now. So do we have any visitors? Mr. Powers, did anybody sign in for this portion?
Well, we actually need to sign in. I'm sure if you're to speak on rezoning, or if you're on public comment, but this is... This is just for general public comment, not related to any of the...
All right. So here, having no one step forward, I will move, there's no old business, so moving into new business. Public hearing for RZ-25-2.
And we can go ahead and use the stuff that these together, because they are the same project, so we can open the public hearing for both 25-2 and 25-3.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing for RZ-25-2. Is there an echo? You have new... Yes. I apologize. I've never had this.
Are you switching?
Yeah.
Can we move the speaker?
We do, so people online can, can hear and... Okay, let's try that. Not as bad. Okay. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing for RZ-25-2 and public hearing for RZ-25-3. And if anyone is here to speak on behalf of the, those two items. Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing for RZ-25-2 and RZ-25-3.
And if I may, Mayor, on the, so our next two items for the rezoning and the PUD, since they're all the same project, I recommend we just do the presentation for the whole entire thing. And then at the end of that, if your questions and everything is, is done, then there'll be three separate requests for motions there. We could do those at the, at the end.
Okay.
If you, if that's okay.
Yes, because this project came in as a concept first, so we want to see where it's at.
Yes, yes.
So let's go ahead to the presentation and see if anything has changed from the concept to the presentation. So with that, I would...
He's on his way, okay.
Could we request that...
We could.
We do.
Do the one behind us first and then us? They'll help?
Yes, that'd be fine, yes. Okay, so we're moving into concept plan for 7410 Converse Huff Road.
Yep.
Okay, so CP-25-2, concept plan, 7410 Converse Road, Madison County parcel, number 02-00157, applicant Gary Smith, G2 Planning and Design. And we will hold off on items three, four, and five. So this is number six on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. First, great to see everybody again. It's been a little while, a few months since I've seen you. Excited to be back. I'm gonna put this, so I think it's gonna only display on the screen behind you, so I apologize. We're connecting now. There we go. But we, we actually, so we have a really kind of unique situation in front of us here. We have two properties side by side on the same room frontage and two separate builders who are kind of coming in together with their annexation and their rezoning. So I'm gonna kind of just go through these one at a time. But these are kind of being presented as, you know, we've got, we've got two separate projects going at the same time with two separate builders. And kind of the thing that's exciting about this is, you know, they're builders that are already in the community. We have Polte Homes, which I'm sure everybody is familiar with at this point. We also have Arbor Homes, and if you're not familiar, Arbor is currently building in Amerim Reserve. They've got about 10 lots moved in, they've got about 50 lots started, so you can kind of see some of the product that's going in there. And the builders really have, and I'm gonna let them kind of talk through their mission, but they have kind of two different missions in terms of what they're trying to provide. And so I think both of these projects are unique in that they're gonna, they're going to bring different market segments for single-family housing to, to the village, which I think is gonna benefit a lot of different people. So I want to just run through kind of the Polte side first. So the Polte Homes property is on what's known as the Lewis property. And so if you're looking at the site, and I'll just kind of show you this on the screen. Right, they have 82 acres, and they're on the west end of the two properties. So the Polte site is the site right there outlined in red, and then the Arbor Homes site is the site right here. And so when you look at these, you kind of, kind of keep in mind that those two things are side by side. So the Polte site is a total of 82.6 acres, and it's primarily farmland. When you look at kind of the existing conditions, primarily farmland, we do have an electric easement that kind of runs through the one side of the property, and it kind of runs north and south. That also connects up to some open space areas in the development that was approved not too long ago, just to the north of us. Not much really in the way of kind of existing environmental features. There's a few trees on the site, which you'll see that we, you know, tried to kind of preserve some of those things in the site plan. The homestead is kind of going away. And then from a drainage perspective, everything pretty much drains to the east. So when you look at, it just goes from west to east, and it goes through Polte's property and then through the Arbor Homes property. So just real quick, an overview of the concept plan, because we are at the concept plan stage. And so really, this is an opportunity to kind of put this in front of you, get some feedback from you before we put together kind of a formal application. Each of the applicants, each of the builders are here today, and they want to talk a little bit about their product, too. So I do have some architecture in here, so in a minute, I'll call up Jim Hills from Polte, and he can go through his product. Once he's done, you guys can ask some questions of him on that, and then we'll move into the Arbor Homes portion of the presentation, if that's okay with everybody. So what we have is kind of a mixture on this property of 52 and 60-foot lots. So bringing kind of a diversity of lot sizes in the development, intermixing them kind of throughout the development, and then incorporating open spaces and trying to kind of connect some of those up with paths, you know, and different features. We haven't got into the point of kind of thinking through or developing any of the amenity structure for the development. Again, we're kind of very early on in the concept stage. But we are, we are the total of 24 acres of open space, which is about 30%. And we're at a density of about 2.77 units to the acre. And so that, that equals a total of about 240 lots ultimately in the development. And generally, what you're gonna see is, so we're making connections, obviously, to Converse Huff Road to the south. Those are gonna be our primary entrances. But we are also in a couple of locations connecting up to where the proposed development is on our north side. And then you'll see, as we go through the Arbor Homes presentation, we're also creating interconnectivity between this parcel and the Arbor Homes, which are those road stubs that you see there to the east. And you'll see that reflected in the, in the Arbor Homes concept plan. The other kind of interesting thing about this application, and this almost never happens, I've been in this business a long time. It's very rare to get two builders to kind of work in coordination a lot, but they've hired the same team for both projects. So myself is a planner, they've hired Kim Lee Horn as the engineer, and Tom Hart, the legal representative for the project. So we, you have one team to kind of work with on both projects as they move through the process. So that's a kind of a brief breakdown of the, of the concept plan itself. You can kind of see the larger lots, the 60-foot lots are in the yellow, the 50-foot lots are in the orange. So you can kind of see how those are intermixed together. We have an existing path connecting up to an existing path network to the north of us, in that development to the north. And, you know, that kind of runs through some of the open space areas and into some of these larger open space areas. We are providing a little bit of buffer in between us and some of those areas on the east. And also, what you, what you're gonna see also in the Arbor application is we're providing kind of a joint buffer between the two developments. So we're giving a little bit on the Polte side and a little bit on the Arbor Homes side to create kind of a wider landscape buffer ultimately, where they can potentially share some landscape treatments and those kind of things between the communities. So that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell for the site plan. We don't have a lot of other information to go, because again, we're at the concept plan. As we come back with the development plan, we'll obviously have more information for you on signage and amenities and those kind of things for the development. But while we're at it, what I'll do is I'll just ask Jim to come up and kind of share a little bit about Polte and some of the architecture that they have, just to give you kind of a window into that. And then maybe we'll take questions on, the comments on this one, and then we'll move forward into Arbor. So Jim, do you want to spend a couple minutes?
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Jim Hills with Polte Homes. One thing about the site plan before we changed gears to the architecture I wanted to point out was, is that kudos to Gary and his team for putting together what is a really nice plan. Very few lots are back-to-back. It really is a very well-done plan, and G2 certainly deserves the credit for that. I'm gonna run through the series of homes. What, we have two series that we've included here. As you look through these...
Slide up, Jim.
These four are the, will be the first series here. These range in square footage from 2,250 square feet to over 3,000. The next series starts with this home. There's six homes in this series. These are 2,500 to over 3,000 square feet. We're building these homes in Pioneer Crossing, Jerome Township. I'm talking about both series. Delaware, Sunbury, Columbus Sawyer Schools, and Liberty Township in Delaware County. We did also include, that I wanted to show here, two ranch homes as part of the package as well. So these are 1,650 to over 1,800 square feet. All of this is base square footage, by the way. There, there is an opportunity for, for some expansion of the square footage of the homes. So that really covers architecture specifically. And we would be happy to answer any questions.
Do they have basements or are they on slab?
At this point, we haven't had that discussion at this point in time, so I can't say one way or the other.
Do the homes in Pioneer Crossing have basements?
Yes, they do.
They do. I do, I appreciate houses not backing up to each other. My one, one of my comments would be, as I look at some of our other housing developments around and the ones that I see, you know, you can see the front of the house from the street or road. It looks nice, because some have where you're looking in at people's, the back of living space, and it just, it doesn't feel as inviting to me. So I would like to see on that, on Converse Huff Road, where the houses are flipped around somehow. I know it kind of messes up with the, the street. However, I, I just think that it makes it, the neighborhood look a little bit, look nicer.
We can, we can certainly take a look at those, Mayor. One of the hardest things to deal with, you know, is, and especially in today's world with costs continually going up and up and up and up, is the amount of street that you have to build to get the density ultimately affects what the buyer has to pay for the house. So what they really end up paying for is a lot more street, and that gets factored into the price of the home. And so we're trying to keep that as efficient as possible. One of the things that we can do is to incorporate some pretty significant landscape buffers and mounding and treatment along Converse Huff Road to, to kind of minimize the impact of any of that. So we, we can take a look and see if there's some options for us to, to turn some things around or to minimize the total number, those kind of things. It's gonna be hard to eliminate entirely, but your, your comment, your point's well taken.
You know, architecturally, I think that maybe one thing that we could, could help that situation, and one of the, maybe the comments that I've seen a lot of the constructions that have been going up lately is that it seems the houses that are being built now have any differentiation of surfaces on the front, but then the two sides and the back are literally just flat walls. Maybe we can incorporate some, some steps in, in either of those three surfaces to create some different shadow lines.
So it's not just a flat facade.
That is all we're seeing. And if you're doing that right along the Converse Huff, that's, you're just gonna get a wall constructed.
We, we can take a look at some of those elevations and just see how they stack up. A lot of those obviously are kind of pre-designed, you know, for corporate, especially for, for production builders. But they're, I, I will say, you know, Polte does it as well as any builder in terms of creating kind of interest in the architecture, and they really focus on that. So we'll, we'll come back to you with some better answers on that, as we come back with, you know, a more detailed application. And we will certainly focus on kind of understanding how that is gonna look from Converse Huff Road. It's, the real challenge is there's just so much frontage of Converse Huff that to have a completely unloaded road all the way across the front absolutely kills the, the finances of the project. It puts the homes too far out of reach of where they're, you know, where the prices should be ultimately.
Has the civil engineering been done for this product, or is it just...
No, no, no. We're, we're very much in, we're very much in kind of the concept things. And so we're, you know, we're gonna be kind of engaging more with the civil engineer as we put together, you know, our development plans, and we're, they'll start to put together, you know, more costing, more concrete, kind of stormwater, you know, those kind of things, just to make sure that all of that stuff works.
So some of the other developments have kind of used a lot of retention ponds to help get the houses on the street as well.
And there might be some opportunity for that at the west end, you know, we can look at that. And maybe there's a way for us to stagger that so that, you know, we... The hard part, obviously, is about incorporating, incorporating that on the west end is we're uphill. But, you know, you can do a series of smaller ponds potentially that way. The other advantage to that sometimes is that it also allows you to decrease the size of the sewer, because now you're not carrying all the water in a sewer from one end to the other. So you don't have to have 24-inch sewer pipes, but maybe you can do it in 12. So we'll, we'll have those conversations with the engineer. We'll get a little bit more detailed with this before we come back, but appreciate those comments.
Sure.
I noticed, I noticed you're proposing public streets throughout.
Yes.
This, the road running west to east, have you thought about any kind of treatments to help control traffic through there? And that's a pretty long stroke.
Yeah, one of the things that we tried to do, obviously, was give it some curve, just so that it doesn't feel like a complete straightaway. But this is, it kind of gets back to that age-old question, is how do you deal with this in a residential area? And really, from a planning perspective, the best way that they found to deal with it is you allow parking on at least one side of the street. You get street trees kind of up in the tree lawns. It makes the road feel a lot smaller than it actually is, and it makes people less comfortable to drive. Nobody likes speed bumps, including the service guys that are plowing the streets. They hate them as well. So, you know, we've tried to minimize some of the conflict points, you know, instead of four-way intersections, we've tried to keep most of them to three-way, you know, intersections. We could potentially look at incorporating some stop signs in there as well, so that, you know, even at a three-way stop, everybody's gotta come to a stop. There's some things we could do without really getting into things like speed tickles or speed bumps.
Something that there's someone here can look at.
Yeah.
We like, I mean, we're, we take great, we go to great lengths to slow people down through our communities because of the safety issues that it can create.
There'll be a lot of kids living in that one, like, so you gotta pick out the town.
What's the street width?
And then the driving kids, too, and they're not always as smart as that 16, 17-year-old.
Yeah. I mean, from a street width perspective, I think what you're asking is, we're, we're gonna do the minimum that we can, because we want to keep those, those speeds slower. We're gonna do the minimum of street width that those, that the village will allow, and still allow parking on one side of the street.
I hate that plan. I know we've proved it other places, but I hate that plan, because I live in a neighborhood like that, and we have 1,000 little kids, and when they all turn 16, the neighborhood's gonna look like trash when you walk in, because there's gonna be cars everywhere. So I like the wider roads, and I'd rather come up with a plan on the other way of... Because I'm also worried about Derby Fields, you're making cut-throughs, because anybody coming down Chillicothe's gonna, now, when traffic's already bad in the neighborhood, coming down some of those, how are we gonna get, you know, 500 more homes coming in off Chillicothe, cutting through our neighborhood's off, so not ideal.
Yeah, we, we can look at those things. We'll certainly have more detailed conversations about all of those things. You know, I'm assuming that as we get through this, you know, traffic studies and those kind of things are gonna be part of this conversation. So the engineer's got a lot of work to do to put, you know, a lot more meat on the bone here, so that we can have a little bit more intelligent conversation about it. But I, you know, I think all of those things, you know, we can work through as we, we go through the process. I, I think we, we share the same concerns that a lot of people do, it's just how do we get there? It's in the best interest of Polte to make sure that their streets are safe and, you know, everybody feels safe and comfortable in their neighborhood. That's...
And that was my point. If you stop at the easement and just look to the west side, those are pretty safe streets, right?
Yeah.
There's bands, and there's, but that's runway, and that's a long, that's a long... I know you're trying to put some curve, and I see it.
Yeah. We can take a look at that. Like I said, we, it seems like, you know, we've got a little evaluation of the site plan to do. We might have to make some adjustments based on some of the things that we've talked about, so we can look at how we maybe break that up a little bit. I, you know, I can think of maybe some ways that we could deal with that, so we'll just, we'll just have to, we'll have to make some adjustments.
That's fine.
And do you have any multi-use paths, like along the front?
We haven't even gotten that far yet. But I'm assuming that's something that's gonna come up as part of our discussion in the, in the rezoning.
Can I ask a question about lot widths?
Sure.
Are these, are these set for you?
Well, everything's always flexible, right? But from a, from a standpoint of trying to make the community work and get to the price points they need to, you know, the lot widths have to be kind of close to where they are, just to get, you know, their price points in. Because it's, house prices are just going through the roof, and they're getting out of reach of most normal buyers, so we have to be very sensitive to that.
So we, we, I mean, I want to speak for the group, I guess, but as I've been on the group, we've typically pushed for at least seven-foot side yards. This was depicted as five.
Yeah, we actually, I did update that to six, and I knew that that would be a divergence request from the city's code. So we understand that that's gonna be part of the conversation. Actually, in both of these communities, I think I initially showed five, but I changed them to six. I didn't update what we actually sent to the, to the village, but they, in our presentation, we both showed six right now.
The lot to the, and I believe I know the answer, but... The lot to the northwest there, that is what development that's gone through. Is that carriage, is that carriage, is that Beechey?
No.
Oh, on Beechey.
Is that the larger Beechey?
Yeah, Beechey, Beechey.
So I assume that your connection points are coordinated with them?
Yeah. I mean, to the extent of what we have now, we, we took a, a scan of their site plan and kind of lined it up. And so as we get more detailed engineering information, you know, we'll make sure that they, they line up.
Right. We actually met with them yesterday to compare site plans, and we'll continue to do that going forward.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, and we make sure, Sarah and I'll make sure.
Yeah, which is the same point that's all connected.
Is there any concern from our fire department?
I was gonna make a comment. I mean, typically, this, again, as I've said before, we've pushed for larger landscape buffers between communities, as sizable as 60 feet, I believe, in some of them. Now, obviously, this, to the west, maybe we can have that discussion with the Beechey Farm group. But the east is sort of an interesting combination, because it's your next development, right? So...
Yeah. So we have, I think what we actually have is 20 or 30 feet on each side. So right now, we've got at least 40 or 50 feet between the two. You'll see it when we give the next presentation. So there's a, there is a substantial buffer between the two. What we've done is just split it between the two communities. So it's kind of a shared buffer.
Okay.
And that's at the end of lots, too, so not, you have backyards, then it starts the...
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe for a final, maybe depict that, just to show it, that'd be good.
Yeah, well, for, since we're working with both communities, you know, in our plans, we could just include a portion of the plans in either submittal, so that you can very easy kind of cross-reference what's going on on each side.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, I'd also like to kind of see, I, I know you, you have the retention pond up in the northwest corner there, and then like the row of houses, I, if you could work in green space there, so that kind of has like a nice conservation buffer, and then start the homes, just so that there is differentiation between both communities.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that.
I'm assuming these would have shared, shared mailboxes, is that...
Yeah, but all communities now have to have the cluster mailboxes. We have... We have plenty of open space areas to be able to work those in. I would imagine with this number of homes, we're probably looking at maybe five locations kind of spread throughout the community. We, we try to keep them to no more than four boxes per location. It seems like about the right size. I think when you get more than that, it looks kind of odd and when you get smaller than that, it just seems to be out of place as well. So for some reason, four seems like the magic number. But, so I think we'll end up with about five kind of spread throughout the community. We try to, we try to move them around so that we can get them as close to walking distance from most of the homes as we can. Even though most people likely pick up their mail on the way home, you know, if somebody wants to get out of their car at the end of the night and walk down to the mailbox, we want to make that as available as possible.
One thing I want to comment to the group that, that's one thing I do like about, you know, this is just concept, this is every user's concept, but this is one of the first concepts where I've seen trees placed around the retention ponds. So that's, you know, moving forward in our, in our architectural design standards that we're working on, you know, we talked about this previously before about landscaping around these, so these ponds, so these are something that moving forward with any development through, we wanted to talk about that, that landscaping. But I do like, at least conceptually, the, the trees, that's something that we have not seen at all, trees being planted around, or any type of tree that are really being planted around these retention ponds, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one comment of my perspective on Converse Huff. Looks like you're looking at right away there.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, Derek, from an annexation standpoint, where are we at on center line, right away line? Along the road?
Yeah, I'll have to double check with Jason tomorrow. We always request a center line, it just depends on, on if it is a county road versus ODOT, ODOT typically has not, this side counts. Yeah, so I imagine this one's probably going to go to the middle of the road. And I can check, but there's actually, there's three filings total between this, the next one and the church property that will all be annexed at the same time. So I'll, I'll double check because they are, I know they're ready to be filed.
I just want to look at the right away with along Converse Huff and make sure we get proper right away there. Because there's future improvements along Converse Huff that are planned and if we need to write it now, it's time to do it. I'm almost certain they're to the middle of the road.
So Mr. Hutchison, you'll find out that clarification, okay? And then we, I'm trying to remember to approve if we just send it on per concept to council or?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, if you're done with questions on that one, we can move to the next one. And then this, same like all of it, so this, this next set will go in the same presentation to councils to get their.
Oh, concept does go to council?
Yeah.
Okay.
But no approval from us?
No.
No, and even council won't approve the concept, it's just to trying to get.
Way in on comments.
Yeah, so that way, when it comes in for the first phase, we hopefully ears are listening to our comments, so, okay.
There's a lot of work between staff and then the applicants between that time too.
Yeah. And we're, and we're going to have some time as the annexation gets filed and that timeline of the annexation, we'll have plenty of time to work with staff and city engineer and, and our engineer just to iron out a lot of these different things. So looking forward to that process.
Thank you for concept plan 25-2. Moving on to concept CP-25-3, concept plan Converse Huff Road, Madison County parcel number 02-00088.003, applicant Gary Smith, G2 Planning and Design.
Okay, so this is part two of that stretch of property. And so this is the Arbor Homes section. And so you can kind of see, so this is the property here that we were just discussing here. And the Arbor Homes section is right here. The property itself is primarily, again, farmland, almost entirely. There's very few discerning natural features. Again, everything really kind of drains to the east, you know, from the west to the east. And the site essentially is a blank canvas. It's a blank slate. One of the things early on that we wanted to mention is you see a little bit of a notch there on the bottom right-hand corner of the property. This property kind of abuts the existing church. Arbor Homes has been working with the church. The church actually asked for some additional property to facilitate some expansions. Arbor Homes has agreed to donate that property to the church as part of this process. Obviously, that's contingent upon them moving forward with the contract and the construction of homes, but they have agreed to work with the church to do that. So we actually showed that new property line to the inside of where the actual property is today. The one thing that's a little bit different about Arbor Homes, and I'm going to let Drew speak to this a little bit more as, as he gets into the product, but Arbor's mission is a little bit different. Arbor Homes is very much focused on providing housing for that first-time home buyer and trying to keep it kind of in an affordable range so that, you know, teachers and firefighters and construction workers and those kind of folks can actually afford the mortgage. Because, you know, we know what's happening with houses now, they're getting into 400, 500, $600,000 range. And that mortgage is becoming more and more out of range for a lot of folks, especially when you talk about the down payment required and all of those things. So Arbor is really excited about this site and we've been having some conversations with, with Derek and, and a while about this. But they are looking at trying to provide a little bit different product range than what Polte is providing. So they're going to be more on the entry level segment of the market. So the two projects are really going to work together, they're going to intertwine, but they're not going to cannibalize from each other. They're going to be in kind of separate price points. So this site plan, so this is a, a concept of the site plan. Now Arbor is a little bit different and they have a, they have a 44-foot lot product and a 54-foot lot product. The 44-foot lot product is what they call their arrival series and that is the targeted towards really the first-time home buyer. And then they have their Arbor series, which is on the Arbor lot, Arbor, or which is on the larger lots. And so those, you have a mixture of mostly 54-foot lots. Total lots in this is 234 dwellings, which ends up at 40 units to the acre. Total open space is 16.65 acres, which is 28.8%. So very similar open space to what we're providing next door with Polte. You can kind of see on the left-hand side, that open space, that, that buffer that exists here as well as, you know, what exists on the Polte side. So you can kind of see where we're combining that open space to kind of create one larger buffer between the two communities. And you can see what we've done on the west side essentially is to try to create more space between the, the new Arbor Homes community and the existing community there to the west in leaving in this area, leaving, you know, a pretty substantial buffer and, and landscape area. But then also we've tried to organize it so that we're not really paralleling, paralleling a lot of the lots all the way along the border. So working kind of with the stormwater, trying to move that street away, you know, same thing here as we get up here, we're creating a little bit more generous curve to try to, to try to kind of sweep the lots away. So we don't have a lot of lots kind of directly backing up to the adjacent community. And that's kind of by design as we went through. So we've got a series of open spaces that kind of weave through the community. And one of the things that we have an opportunity to do here is we've got existing paths that connect from other areas of the existing community. So we're trying to create opportunities for connectivity. I'll see if I can draw this in a different color. Let's go with blue. So we, we have, we have paths that run through the community and they go, you know, around, they connect over into the open space and down, and connect down into kind of the open space over here and around the pond and kind of over here to some sort of a, kind of an overlook feature ultimately. Very similar, you know, we still haven't gone through and tried to kind of outline all the amenities yet. We're very early on in the process. And then we've got a couple of parket pocks that also happened kind of throughout there. And because of the nature of the site, you know, we don't actually have a lot of frontage on Converse Huff Road. And so most of this community really is kind of back off of the road from Converse Huff. The, I'm going to just stop for just a second because I know that Drew would like to talk about Arbor Homes, kind of what their focus is and talk through some of their products. And then again, we can kind of get into questions and comments from the, from the board. So, Drew.
Thanks, Gary. My name's Drew Miller, I'm with Arbor Homes. You know, what you'll see, Gary did a really good job of explaining the differences between, you know, what Arbor's about, what Polte's about. It, it's really true that we're offering different products here. At Arbor, we're not, you know, we're not shy about the density that we're proposing here. And I wrote down a few things, I want to just explain a little bit more about who Arbor is and why this density that we're proposing is important. So our vision at Arbor Homes has always been simple, everyone deserves a home, a home to call their own. We're guided by our values of opportunity, family, customers, ethics, and processes. And our mission is clear, to put as many people in homes as possible, especially those who didn't think that they could afford it. So we started in 1994 in Indianapolis. We've grown from building a handful of homes to thousands each year while keeping that same focus. We design neighborhoods that make homeownership attainable for hard-working families. Today affordability is the greatest challenge that home builders face and customers face when they're trying to buy a home. The median new home price has climbed to over $418,000 while the median household income in Ohio is around $80,000. That's a price-to-income ratio of more than five to one, which is far above historic norms. At the same time, the United States has grown through 15 consecutive years of underbuilding, creating a shortage of millions of homes. And so the hardest-hit buyers have been those looking for their first home. So that's why projects like what we're proposing here matter. The arrival series, our arrival series products in that dense area, it's designed specifically for attainability. Our target base price for those homes is $250,000, which is really unheard of in central Ohio these days. That level, it, it makes homeownership realistic for young families, first-time buyers, and even people looking to downsize. So Gary hit on this a little bit, but there's a lot of people who live or work in this community who can't afford to live here. And we're targeting those people. We, we think that they belong to live in this community if they're, you know, involved in, in contributing to it. When families can buy at this level, it leaves more money in their pockets to spend locally. Attainability isn't just about the purchase price. New construction reduces maintenance costs and compared to older resale homes, helping families save on upkeep year after year. Those savings too free up household income that can be used to support Plain Cities businesses, schools, and services. So by allowing density here, close to infrastructure and services, we can help preserve the surrounding farmland and rural character while still giving more families the chance to put down roots and cultivate city home. In short, this project is about balance. It's providing attainable homes for families while aligning with Plain Cities goals to manage growth responsibly, support local businesses, enhance walkability. And we see this project as one that will help Plain City grow sustainably, strengthen its economy, and most importantly, help more families achieve the dream of homeownership. So I wrote those down just really because I wanted to help explain why we're proposing this density. It's new to a lot of people. This arrival product is new to central Ohio. We just started building it in Indianapolis and it's selling really well. Like I said, it's a price point that people don't see, you have, people haven't seen this price point in years and we're really proud of that. And so I'll go through a couple of these elevations. So starting here, this is our traditional Arbor home. These range in square footage from 1,200 to 3,200. We have 15 different floor plans available with, with this Arbor series.
You're kind of going really fast.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
And I do have copies of both of these builders' home models and stuff, so I can send you all.
Hold on right there, Drew, just real quick. One of the things I think that I want everybody to notice as part of this is when you look at kind of the primary elevation of the home there in the larger version, what you're seeing on the left-hand side is a variety of different elevation options for that same floor plan. So, you know, even though they are focused on affordability, like a lot of builders, they're also focused on diversity of the houses. So affordability doesn't have to mean that all of the houses look exactly the same. It doesn't have to look like the tract houses of old. It can still be a nice community, it could still have a diversity of architecture, and it can still maintain its value over time because they are more maintenance-free homes. Again, they have a diversity of looks. So, you know, when you're in your community and you're selling your house, you're not selling the same house that five other people in your community are selling. Your house can be more unique because there are more elevation options, so.
Yeah, that's a great point, Gary. My job as a developer on our land team is to, to try and get that base price as low as possible. And then we let the customers choose the upgrades they want. So there's a lot of options they can choose. And so we see, you know, folks putting in, I think on average, about $10,000 to $15,000 worth of changes, material selections, things that will go into the home for that final price.
And that, that's what's on the eastern side?
That's correct.
Yes. And we'll, and we'll get to that, kind of the arrangement of the product in a minute because I do think that is important there, than why we arrange the product that way.
Drew, these are the same models, these series here, these are the same ones that are over there.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, everything you're seeing here, this is the Arbor series, this is what's being sold at Mariner's Surf right now.
And the street seems like it has curve to it on the outer side. My, my concern i- is the patio home. It just seems like everything, I know it's the high density, but to me, it just looks like everything's shoved in together. And I'd really like to see like more of like the three, three units per acre versus the four, I think four, just the, the quality i- in the arrangements goes down.
Yeah, I can, I can appreciate that. Just a couple of quick comments about that it, these neighborhoods, they're going to have a feel of townhomes, but they're detached. And so people still get all the livability of owning their own home, they're going to have a small yard. But what we're seeing from our customers who are looking at these products is they're not looking for a big yard. They're, they're, this is somebody who's looking to move into these homes. They're looking for less maintenance and they're not interested in, in a lot of landscaping things. So in order to get them in at that price, that's why we have that density like that.
One of the things that we try to do, kind of back to that, Mary, is you'll notice that we kind of internalize that a little bit. So we do have kind of the larger homes around the one side, we do have kind of the shared landscape buffer between them and Polte. And so that kind of section of Arbor Homes has kind of encapsulated in the middle, it's kind of back off of Converse Huff Road. So it's essentially, it's its own little enclave surrounded by, you know, more typical standard single-family homes. So, you know, we're doing a lot of things to try to say, you know, reduce any kind of visual concern there and also to kind of bring it in so that we're not just putting it against, you know, an adjacent neighborhood. We're trying to put kind of like-house sizes against like-house sizes while creating, again, an opportunity for, you know, pocket of some of those more affordable houses.
Except for on the west side, you have the patio runs next to the Polte home.
And that's going to be up against the newer Polte community where we're also going to have that landscape buffer. where we're also going to have that landscape buffer.
I would still like to see like, I think, like houses mirroring each other because to me, if I was to build a, you know, almost 3,000 square foot house, I don't know if I would like that product right behind me.
We can, we can certainly take a look at some of those things.
Yeah, for me, it's the feel of the two is so different. And I think that's where I'm, I mean, it's funny because the, the street conversation like we had in the last presentation is, is very apparent here where we're having the same issues that we brought up the past time. And it seems to, that's gone all the wayside on this particular side. And I think maybe that just needs to be re-thought at this highly dense product so that it doesn't feel so out of place.
We can, we can take a look at certainly some layout options. The challenge again is for these guys, for what they really want to achieve and create that first time home buyer option, that, some of that density is really important to that price point. And there's just no other way to, there's just no other way to explain it because one of the biggest factors in the cost of the house is the cost of the land. And, you know, the more houses you can put on the land, the lower you can charge for those houses.
Well, yeah, but, but we also want the aesthetic.
Certainly.
It's, I mean, to us, yes, we, we do, there are people in our community that do need that opportunity, but we have a lot of diverse housing at the moment in the pipe. We just want the neighborhood to feel, we don't want to look 10 years or even shoot two years down the road and say, man, I wish we could have, because there's ones out there that I would say, I would do this a lot different. And so that's what we're trying to, where we can be proud of, that we approved something that we're like, yes, this neighborhood.
And I, and I think, I think we're with you. I mean, we've had some of those discussions in the past on some of these other communities and they just didn't turn out the way we had hoped. And so we, we get it. We, we'll, we'll do our best and we'll take a look at some of those things and we'll, we'll try to respond to, to some of those comments.
I did have the privilege of going to Indiana, one of the cutting ones for this, for this product in Hannah, it's in Martinsville, Indiana.
Yeah, Hannah Farm.
Hannah's sacred, Hannah, I forget the name of that development. But these are, they are more than, I mean, they are, they're, they do give the condo, townhome feel, but you're separated, you don't, you're not renting a condo, you own the home, you own the lot.
You're building equity.
So they are closer together and, and, you know, and that's something that we'll have to discuss on, you know, as far as lot size and, you know, a lot of it. But this, this also is what today is, like, well, like you said, it is portable housing. That is the number one thing that we're getting comments back from, you know, our comp plan studies, it's more affordable houses. You know, and I'm not rallying specifically for them. Arbor has been a great partner at Mariner Reserve. If you had a chance, you have to go over and look at their products, beautiful homes. And these are the same quality, they're just narrow, narrow homes.
What's the difference between the price points on both? You said 250 on the small ones or the big ones?
Yeah, so these, these Arrival lots, we're targeting 250. I would say that our traditional Arbor line, the, the ones on the eastern side is probably going to be closer to 3, 350 and up.
One of the things that I would encourage everybody to do, because I, I think it is important, just like Derek said, is if you do have the opportunity to travel a little bit, I know we're all, we all have busy, busy schedules, but it'd be great to go see one of those communities and just see what they're, what they're all about. I know it's hard to ask because I think the closest one right now that's completed is in Indiana.
Yeah.
But it's, they, they do turn out to be nice communities. They're not, they're not cheaply done. And the, the density is what actually helps them not be cheaply done because you don't have to skip on some of the other things. Like if you have less density, maybe you have to take the cost out somewhere else, right? They still have, all of these homes still have multiple architectural elevations available to the buyer. You know, they all have sidewalks, they all have street trees. We've seen people try to do affordable communities and, and try to do it without just removing any kind of site costs that they can from the equation. And that's what ends up looking, you know, really like a poorly done community. They, they really do focus on trying to still make it a community and desirable for the people that are going to live there. And they want to maintain some of that resale value too, ultimately through the community. So if you, if you get a chance, it would be good to look at.
How long's that development? What, what's the oldest development you have out there in Indiana that you'd look at?
We started building homes in 1994.
So you have some that's been around since?
Yeah.
This type of identity?
No, no. So this, this Arrival product's new. We've, we've only started this just a few years ago. We've got that first neighborhood in Indianapolis. We don't have a, any of these Arrival products yet in central Ohio. We're working on a few different developments in, in different municipalities.
I would concur with the mayor where my largest concern is really just the aesthetics of the high-density part of this site, the conceptual plan here. Is there any thought process that could go into having more of the $350,000 home and not as much as the, the first time home buyer density over on the other side?
Yeah, I, you know, we can go back, we can look at, we can try and pencil those numbers and see what's going to work for us. But yeah, you know, that is our mission is to, to get first time home buyers in and help the affordability crisis.
I can appreciate that. I, I really do understand that. It's just, it is, it is concerning the density of, of the product.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's, it's interesting because for many years, the trend in building new neighborhoods has been that, less dense. But if you look at some of the older neighborhoods, say like in Columbus or something, or, you know, even those pocket suburbs inside Tucson, you'll see really dense neighborhoods. I, I live in Clintonville actually, and this is pretty consistent with the type of neighborhood that Clintonville is. And they're still charming neighborhoods, you know? They're, they're smaller houses, they're on much narrower lots. It's just the, you know, suburbs and, and neighborhoods and divisions like this, the trend for, for a long time has been less dense. And, and I think that's really where a lot of the affordability issues have stemmed from.
But sir, we are not Clintonville. We are Plain City. And a lot of people move out here for the country aesthetic.
Sure.
And I, I feel that we sometime, everybody, you know, yes, density, that's how you can make it affordable, but we also have to stay true to what, what our community is. And we just really highly encourage you to look at that section.
Yep. Yeah, we, we'll definitely do that.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm assuming these are on slides?
They are, yeah. Basements are an option, so.
Basements are an option.
Yep, yeah, if somebody wants basement, we can pick those. We really appreciate the feedback. I know this is, this is new product, central Ohio, so when I go to different municipalities, I have to kind of explain why, our why. And I really appreciate this feedback. It's going to help us come back to the drawing table and figure some things out that is acceptable to everybody.
Definitely appreciate everybody's time tonight. We got a lot of great feedback. That's one of the reasons why we do these meetings. We're looking forward to kind of continuing forward. We'll go to council, get their feedback as well. And then we're just going to spend a lot of time working with Derek and trying to advise a lot of this and get closer to a lot of the groups we've talked about. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving back to RZ-25-2, we have a rezoning of 57.91 acres of Zero State Route 42 parcel number 18-0001173 from Restricted Industrial District I-1 to Plan Unit Development, PUD, applicant Dwight McCabe, Dublin Osprey LLC. And Mr. Hutchinson, you said to do a presentation first?
Yeah.
And, and get some questions and everything? So, Mr. McCabe, you have the podium to present.
Thank you. And apologies if I have to fire my secretary, which happens to be me. I've had too many public hearings last few weeks and I had you at six instead of 5:30. Apologize to the audience folks, I know that we're here to talk about this tonight. So appreciate the shift in the schedule. So if you want to load that up, we saw you a few months back with a concept plan here. You're not going to see much different than what our original concept plan was. We've taken it a step further. The kind of action tonight is to move the parcels through the rezoning piece of this. And then there'll be a second round, we come back with final development plan to button that up. We spent plenty of time with, with Derek and city staff on setting up the PUD text. We've had lots of interaction now with Mid-Ohio Sewer Water. We had a real good meeting with them this week, timings, everything. And so that's important to us. We've had lots of dialogue with end users. We actually have layers of intent on a number of these uses today and more ready to come. So what is important at this point is to move it through the zoning piece. So at least the folks that are getting teed up to be a part of the project know that it's, it's real. And then they can start to work. Each individual sub area and each individual lot would have its own final development plan and set back together. But so, want to bounce ahead on the slides. So again, I think we all know where this is. It's just north of, of Main Street on either side of 42. There's fundamental sites. So the important features here are we have Darby Creek and some setback from Darby on the west, and we have Passaic Park on the east. One thing I did want to address, just in having a conversation with staff earlier this week, is there's, oh, lost it. The, the, one of the neat features of the main part of this parcel is, it's still going. Oh, I get my own clicker. Well, now we're really in trouble. So the main part in yellow, which would be west of Route 42, it's, it sits, it fronts all the way along 42, it fronts on Darby Creek, the Catholic Diocese properties to the south. And then to the north is, there's a storage facility north and a little bit extra land there is the old Rickert farm. So from an adjacency point of view, and what, what staff and, and planners have all been involved in this, this location, which currently is teed up as commercial and in fact industrial on the, on the east side, the good feature of it is we don't have single-family housing adjacencies. And so for the broad extent of this project. And so it sets up well for the multitude of uses that we have looking at this property. The property then, it's just outlined in yellow, so the 13 plus or minus acres on the east side does come up, gets a park and backs up to some residential on the south side. Today, we're not presenting any kind of plan for that area. There's discussions in, in play that could bring about a conclusion of what that property becomes. And it's just premature to bring a plan together. And in fact, we may not be the ones bringing the plan together once all said and done. But in respect for the neighboring properties, I did want to highlight a few things about how the larger portion relates to those residences south. So what this diagram kind of shows is an illustration of kind of distance from, that's the end of Converse Drive where that kind of V comes to. So if you go to the next one, and it's, it's quite a distance, 1,200 feet, 20, then 2,000 feet to get kind of to these key points. So I guess I could do that. Let's come back to that. So here's a view, this is literally taken at the end of Converse. And what we wanted to illustrate here is how the natural features of how that land lies really supports kind of preserving the buffer and the views from, from the folks that live on Converse. So on the left-hand side, there's currently, so I think that's a, I want to say that's about three acres of grass and you see there that Denise owns. And so there's, they've put a tree line in there years ago on the western edge. So what you're seeing to the left there is a tree line, it's kind of a mix of evergreens and deciduous trees. And then beyond that is Route 42 that has grown in trees on both sides of the road. So you've really got three layers of tree buffer in kind of the left side of that view. On the right side of the view then, you have, you have the park and the mature woods and trees there. So in the middle, the view that would be from the residential looking at the future development, there's two tree lines on either side of, of Route 42 that do a great job of screening that from the residential. What, there's little diagrams that we have in there, what that's kind of representing is a scale look at if you had three-story buildings with a roof or four-story buildings with a flat top, what would you actually see or what could you see today at that distance? You'd see a little bit of the tops of the roof is what you'd see. So that red area kind of represents what you see. One of the, again, features of this property is it sits well below Route 42. In some areas, it's much as 10 feet, in most every area, it's like six or seven feet. So the first floor, basically, you wouldn't see just because of roadbed. And then the floors above it are blocked because of the tree lines. And those tree lines are continued to mature and grow. So just wanted to kind of put that out there for the neighbors. And again, we expect someone to be here to take a look at this. And it's, the, the impact, visual impact is really, fortunately, mother nature's taken care of quite a bit of it. Did kind of want to point out that the current zoning for the parcel, so the 13-acre parcel in particular, is commercial, light industrial. And just to give an idea of what could go there today based on the current zoning, these are the kind of buildings and the kind of businesses that that property actually is zoned for. So that's not what we want to see there. That's not what staff currently wants to see there. That's part of your updated comp plan is to make that change. So we're really here talking about a, a elevation of the zoning of both the 13-acre parcel and the larger parcel. So we're certainly kicking it out the notch. So from a, if I was a neighbor on Converse, that's not what I'd want to see at the end of Converse Drive. And that's not what we have any intention of doing. It's not moving ahead, there you go. So this is the current plan. Again, not a whole lot different than what we shared with you when we were here before. One feature that is different is on the left-hand side at the rear, so that's really the left or the west back end of the site, we do have a nursing home user who's, we're actually, we have a purchase agreement sitting on our desk to sign now. They're a great operator, somebody that's very well-known and until we kind of clear the hurdles, like we got NDA, so I can't tell you the name of them, but I can tell you they're one of the largest in the state and apparently are very good at what they do. So they're very excited to be in the market. They're keenly aware that there are plenty of folks in Plain City that get to that state of life and have to leave Plain City and leave their families to be taken care of. So there's very much a market for that in Plain City currently and as it grows even more so. So we've vetted them out to make sure they're the right kind of folks. Immediately to the neck, to the right of that, you see a T-shaped building. And again, these are concepts, things could move around a little bit to make it all integrate well. But there's another provider who would like to put an assisted living facility. So that's one step less intense than your nursing home, same thing, and I can testify this, my mother, we just had moved to Marysville to be an assisted living. Plain City really only has the one, just to the west out here. And they're full and they've got a long waiting list. And in fact, it's the same operator in Marysville that's here. And, and it's just, it's just a missing element in Plain City. So there's, we've had a layer of intent. Those things typically involve the annual tax credit kind of competition. And so they didn't get in this cycle, I guess every six months. So they're going to be in the cycle, I think it is in February. So there's a layer of intent set at our desk that when they get back in cycle, they would like to do a project like that. So that's an internal hall, multi-story, so it's about a three-story, maybe a four-story building to get on your assisted living units in it. To the right of that then, kind of serendipitous. To the right of that then, kind of serendipitously, we were at the Granery one day with a partner slash client of ours who's in the hotel business, and it turns out to be somebody that the city has spoken to before about the idea of getting some accommodations in Plain City. We talked about trying to find a way to integrate into downtown, you know, historic building or something like that, and that's a heavy lift. But the idea of putting a hotel in Plain City is very much on the forefront of the hotel providers. Some of them, some of them think this is too far out, some are worried about what happens Monday through Thursday. Everybody thinks the weekend traffic's fine. So we decided to go ahead and look at and say, can we find a place within this footprint where a hotel would make sense? We chose to set it back off of 42 instead of bringing it up as a front for a number of reasons. One is, again, it's going to be a little bit taller building, so you've set it back, the trees do a lot better job visually of blocking that. And it's, you know, you've talked a bit about having the wall of buildings, whether it be houses or something along a thoroughfare. We don't like that either. So we felt like that's kind of a better thing, and it marries up well with the assisted living buildings. And then further to the north, to the right, is what's left for the apartment project. One thing we've done here because of these other uses, we've reduced the count of the apartment project pretty significantly. I think the first time we were in here, we were talking about potentially 480 maybe units. At this point, we're really looking at something that's in the 3 to 330 range. So it's much more manageable kind of the size in terms of what the current market really expects to absorb. Just seems to be a better fit and a better mix. And then along the rest of the frontage is, again, commercial buildings. We actually, again, have got a letter of intent from a terrific daycare slash preschool operator, one of the best in central Ohio. They want to be here. We've had interest, and in fact, we're working through a letter of intent with medical-related users, kind of specialized type users. And we put it out there before, and we're kind of on the fence, it's not the highest priority for us, but there's, one of the areas, high-end, drive-through, car wash operations would like to have a place in Plain City, it's possible that it could work out here. It's not for us imperative, but if it works, it works, and it's sitting there in the plan. But it does, certainly as a total complex, looking at the elements that are in this plan that don't exist in Plain City, and for a town that's, if you're not a city yet, we will be very shortly, but when you look at the growth elements, all of these things are features that this community ultimately can use. The other virtue of this is, again, it's the location, we're not adjacent to other kinds of uses that would kind of be in conflict with these uses. It's also on a strip of highway that has full center lane, turn lane already in place. It takes advantage of all that from a trafficking point of view and access and egress and all those things. It also, from a valuation point of view, it drives the ability to, for instance, with Mid-Ohio Sewer Water, it's very compelling for them to be able to get utilities out here and kind of be a first step to get you out to Creekside Project. So there's a lot of tap fees, there's a lot of fast fee charges, and there's a lot of users in here that can pay for that infrastructure and move it beyond this particular site. So it's, there's a lot of leverage for your longer-term plans and other areas of the city. It also stacks up well for, and what's not on this plan, but we've had ongoing conversations with Derek and staff about the interconnectivities, the bike paths and kind of feature of getting the Darby engaged and bike paths and tying into the whole regional network and those kinds of things. All of that sets up really well and can easily be integrated into what we're doing here. So this next one, I think the batter is dead on this, or my word was just bad today. Yeah. So these, again, are just some early images of what these building types potentially can be, and we're very committed to what the kind of imaging of architectural features and things that your comp plan is looking to do. The MKSK folks that you're working with are folks we know really well, and we've worked together with them for years, and so very ready to make sure all this stuff integrates into what your objectives are. This was, there was some discussion, so the staff report that we got back the other day, and we had a call this morning with Derek and Jason to talk about it, just to get on the same page. We are very supportive of what Plain City's objectives are in elevating the look and feel and the architecture and those kinds of things in the community, and that this particular site, and, you know, we're certainly in agreement that it is one of your front entry points to the city. It definitely is not a place where, you know, pre-engineered metal buildings should be. But same time, we also would like to share that we are thinking of how we go about, what we do as a business is very consistent with what you do. At the same time, figuring out how to make things affordable, long-term maintainable, good-looking, and have alternatives about how you get there. So this was just, we just want to throw up there, that's our project, I think you're all aware of, on the south side of Plain City, the Hamlet Project. And the feature set that happens to be that there's no masonry on any of those buildings, and they're all vinyl siding. And so what you're seeing here is a unique way of using the materials. So you've got very maintainable buildings, but they don't come across with all the negative things that people attribute to vinyl siding. There's not long runs of horizontal wave and have gaps and laps and all that kind of stuff. This is, and we've had people do this, they pull in, they think, because it's all vertical board and baton, they think it's wood. And we take them up the side of the building, you have to touch it to know it's different. So it's just how it's detailed, how it's put together, how the features added to it. But at the same time, there's other types of buildings, particularly commercial buildings. We want to see that a commercial building as a primary element of finish would be vinyl. It would be something masonry, it would be something more durable plank or something like that. But, so anyhow, we'll continue discussions with Steve about, and we're not the ones going to be building a vertical. There's, players will come in, they'll bring you developed plans, they'll bring you their final finish. But our encouragement to them will be to do, create things architecturally, if there has to be some accommodation for getting materiality that can make these things affordable in marketplace, we'll support that too. But in the end, we'll make sure that the overall fitness, material durability, those kinds of things are consistent with what you guys are wanting to do. So I don't know what we'll have next. This is just kind of a sewer plan, it's really not much relevant for today, but just kind of to let you know, again, we've been very engaged, looking at timeframes, looking at sequencing, all of that. And in round numbers, it feels like sometime in late '27, we may not be able to flush toilets, but we may be able to at least have running water to build from, and at least the prospect of when, when the sewer utility would be able to open. So it's more likely in '28 is when toilets get to flush. Same thing, next slide, on the water. It's, again, pretty straightforward, and this, again, ties into the Creekside Project. There's probably enough water to get us started. There's likely not enough pressure to support the entire build-out. So ultimately, a tank somewhere further to the north up the hill by Creekside is likelihood. The good news is that's an easy thing to build, it's a quick thing to build, and so nobody's thinking that this is going to be a critical path, timeline to hold back development in this property. So that's pretty much it for today. Thoughts, questions?
So, from our concept meeting, you had talked about, we had talked about that we would like access to our 30 acres. Where do you show that access?
If you could go back to the one that doesn't have all the labels on it, it's probably the easiest.
Because I see the, I see the road to the nursing home, but then it, there's like, there's no path.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's not on the plan now. And so here's, here's the thought in recent conversations. So a thought is for the piece of road that we're building new, so you come off North Chalkathie, cross 42, and then there's a, like a three-legged road internal. So it's a little lighter color road, if you follow that. So that road would have sidewalks on it, and what our initial thought was, if that road has on one side, instead of a regular sidewalk, it's got a full bike path on one side, it would give you a crossing point at the intersection of 42 and North Chalkathie Street. So that would take you into and around that loop. And then along that route loop, probably between the hotel and the assisted living would be the proper place to push the bike trail through, so heading east. You following that? So that gets you through the middle of the, this particular development. It gets you back into the green space area, it gets you close to Darby, where a Darby trail would ultimately be picked up and run, planned here, east and west on plan. So that's a thought. The other thought, again, is discussions about bypass along 42. And again, the expectation is they'll be there. The question is, with this section of 42, where best to put it? Because remember, 42 is high, and then shoulder falls off to a pretty deep ditch that's full of trees, and then it flattens out again on the low side. The real place to put a bike trail along this kind of a high-traffic corridor would be at the bottom of that hill on the opposite side of the tree line. So one way to look at that is, ideally, the place to put that would be in association with the park on plan new, south side of 42. So you really make that a significant kind of thoroughfare bike lane. And then the crossover becomes important, how, what's the best place, safest place, the right place to put that crossover and get it to a different bike trail that would take you along Darby Creek and ultimately probably get you tied all the way back to the Heritage Trail. So we're, at this point, we're wide open on where that actually runs through the development. And then it becomes a question of where would you put, say, a trailhead? So for folks coming in and wanting to park and capture the trail, again, pretty open to that. It could be, it could be along that same corridor, or it could be to the left side on Plain City, a fairly long driveline that gets you back to the nursing home. All of that could happen back there too. There's a drive being built, so there's no reason why it couldn't be a combination drive of public and private. And so at the back end of that could be a head end, so that could be, say, the terminus of the Darby bike trail. So there's lots of ways of going at it. I think some of this at will come into better focus with an alignment with your comp plan. So there's some discussions about that ongoing. So we make sure it ties through this particular site and does what you want with your comp plan, and ultimately out each and every parcel of this starts to really fold together. This is only one way to bring it together. The apartment folks are happy and comfortable with this particular plan. The hotel people, they could go a lot of different directions, as could the assisted living. So there's a lot of ways to move these around, kind of where parking is and put buildings in a different place. The nursing home probably is going to stay pretty close to what it is, because they've got kind of a standard footprint, it's pretty spread out. And because we've got that little belly on the property line on the left side of the page, it keeps you from bringing that south. It's always possible, we could talk to church and go and line up that property line, and that gives us flexibility, so it could create a little more space to the back. But at the same time, all the land to the north of this page is city-owned property. So to put a parking area and all those kinds of things, any of that feature set can actually go north of this property boundary and do pretty much whatever you'd like to do. So there's lots of space up there. Again, all the green space, you see the lakes on the north edge, you know, those will be some kind of retention, water quality, and there's green space to the right. All of that area is unbuildable for us. So that's in Darby reserve area and things we can't build, and it is part of this property. So it does count as green space, but it can be used for things, some things other than just green space. So that's another place, that'd be a way to get into this property and put some parking if you would.
I'd also like to see, I know I made the comment in our concept meeting to, that the buildings in the front here, you have the parking lot on the side that's kind of visible from 42, but I'd like to see like more of the buildings in the front as you're coming down through 42 with the parking in behind it, just for the aesthetic.
Easily done. Like if you look at the left side, you can easily flip that building in the parking, either way, the one on the left. On the, where you have the driveways coming off of 42, so that second drive from the left, in that kind of location where it's streetfront, again, I suppose you could flip those, if you wanted to bring the building like more urban setting up to the side street and 42, right? So it sits on the corner of the building instead of parking on the corner? We could do that. We could certainly do that. Yeah.
So like our previous commercial drew to us, and we have done many of these, every time they sell a site or have a builder come in, that parcel may not look exactly like that, so it may be a little bit smaller, maybe a little bit bigger, but we'll review and, you know, and do those development plans as they come in individually. So, you know, so don't get too attached to what this exactly looks like, because it's probably not going to look exactly like this. We'll see those as a side-by-side thing. And also, we could work on the developed plan or on the text, and we could possibly put that in the development text to something in the whole outlines.
Can you put in what business, like what, how we did with our Commerce Park of like, what, a lot to see what, because there's some, but when you, when you mentioned car wash in here, I don't envision a car wash near our Pastime Park and the Darby. I'm having a hard time putting a hotel here on this property as well, because you have, you have a lot of different things going on, and it's not that far away from residential as much as like I, what I would see. Those are my thoughts when I look at this, what I had envisioned, what you had previously brought into us to discuss. It was more kind of, and if I had a child that I was going to put into daycare, I don't think I would feel safe to have a hotel right there next to a daycare.
Well, as far as uses go, we've talked about this, we, the development, the H, the PUD text that we've put forward, we had exclusory language in there of certain kinds of uses, and then it refers to your standard zoning text for the remainder. As we've talked a little bit more, yeah, maybe there are a few more we don't want. We don't want a tire change place, we don't want a, you know, muffler plate, we don't want any of those kinds of things. So we're happy to do that. You know, if there's consensus on the idea of car wash, so be it. You know, we wanted, we wanted to have looked at one that was kind of typical, it would have been a higher end and, you know, fit in well, that's fine. The hotel, I guess, I might challenge your thinking a little bit on the hotel in terms of thinking about where else in the community it would actually make sense and work, because it's both. The hotel operators to be able to get that kind of facility in Plain City, they're, again, their underlying issue is how does it pay for itself during the week? And to get it to pay for itself during the week, you've got to have drive-by traffic. And so that's, that's commercial traffic on 42. As the Commerce Center opens up, you're back to, that probably has overnight business needs long-term. So being somewhat proximate to that... So being somewhat proximate to that is part of what can help make that work. The, I, I don't know what to say about a daycare close to a hotel, because there's a lot of them out there just like that, so I'm not, I'm not...
I, I would say, I know we have a lot of uses in this development that are pre-taxing to our fire and police. You have, you know, assisted living, nursing home, plus multifamily, and it's just, I think if you add on that extra business, it, it just creates, like, more that, you know, maybe our resources at the moment cannot cover. That is my, my input, looking at this, talking with our first responders, you know, that, those are some major concerns. I'm going to, and I don't want to put them on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. You knew it was coming, but what is your, your thoughts?
I mean, obviously, those are all high, typically, high demand uses, or mostly EMS, I mean, obviously, with that skill, nursing, so the nursing home uses are living. So, I mean, I don't, I don't have any specific numbers, I think we have some, some examples for other communities looking at. Number of units and how that equates to increased poll volume and what that means, and what has played out in other communities, which we've used for several other developments that were proposed or recommended by our district. I mean, it's definitely a concern, because we, I mean, we don't have any of those, which is the reason that here, we don't have any of those current, so, yeah, we definitely have to figure out providers.
Well, I would offer that the broader question really is, it's back to your community plan. So in the end, long-term, are these uses that the community ultimately should have and would have? And, and then you start to look at the funding of that. So, the funding for this would keep the city, or would keep the fire department whole, and PPMS whole, and police department whole. And what you've got then is the concentration of use types, and the real estate property tax value of this in collection generates a lot of outflow. So, it definitely will create much more, if you have three hundred apartment units that, you know, they, two hundred fifty thousand a unit, that's the same as three hundred and thirty of housing that you just talked about earlier today. The outfall, the outflow of that, plus the underlying value of those other uses, does generate a revenue stream that then supports. And so, thinking of it in terms of, you know, the police station, or the fire station is literally right across from one property from here, as far as a location to be able to respond well and have a flow of funds for these kinds of uses, it probably doesn't get much better than this in terms of making that all work together. You know, timing-wise, not all these things will happen at the same time. The hotel may not happen today, tomorrow, it may take five years to get to where the marketplace says hotel can go here. So there's going to be some buildup of property values and cash flow that happen before that. But again, the broader question is, from a community point of view, from a life cycle point of view, all that, again, I'm standing here in a target with, with a mother that we build a project here in Plain City, thinking that's where she would be able to go live, we didn't get done quick enough, so she had to go somewhere else in Plain City, fortunately found a spot, then she got to a place where we had to put her in the next level of care, and there's no place for her in Plain City. We're just one of, lots of people in this town have the same issue. So, just from, from the idea of a community plan, these are uses and needs, and it's back to where's the best place to put them, what's the adjacencies around these kind of uses, what's the proximity of EMS and those kind of things. It just continues to feel like all of that can be accommodated here in a very tight footprint, and that's, that's what drove the mix, really, is really thinking about it, and brought community sense.
I don't discount the nursing home or assisted, I, I know that is, those next steps are, are needed, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission.
I was curious about lots, one through seven, after our medical office daycare. What other uses have you conflated for those seven lots?
Well, Plain City's a little shy on local professional office, so where's the next insurance group go? Where's the next pediatrician go? Where, those kinds of things. That's what we've been getting outreach from, you know, there's, I don't think there's too many attorneys in town, but eventually there'll be more, so it's, it's places like that. And again, thinking ahead from a comp plan point of view, what, what's easily accessible for those kinds of users? You know, they probably won't feel as comfortable in the mix, say, down here by their detriment or across the road here somewhere. Getting that out a little bit where it's a little more on the edge, you know, they've got access to from a minority point of view to be able to, to take lunchtime walks instead of overeating and those kind of things. So, it, it feels like a compelling thing, and for Plain City to elevate a group of commercial users, you know, we're certainly in an environment where nobody's built office buildings, in fact, they're tearing them all down. And so, holding out for some big corporate user to come to Plain City, ask for a fifteen-year tax abatement, and maybe leave when it's done, that's not really what this location would make sense for. So what's the next layer? What do people in Plain City need? This pretty much fills the bill. Otherwise, they're going to go to the edge of Dublin where there's a lot of this kind of product today, but that's Dublin, and so it doesn't, it's not close to home for the people that are loving you.
I think I missed the, the first presentation, I must not have been here that, that particular, so I, I first want to commend you, I guess, on the conservation property donation to the village for the pro, for the project. I think that's, I think that's actually a really strong message you're sending to the board, that, that's a donation on the Big Darby, and I think what really kind of spurred my comment is, is the mayor's comment about the path, and I think that's a really lost opportunity with this particular site plan, because to me, you, you've made the conscious effort to donate thirty-nine acres to the village that's on the Big Darby, and then you decided, sort of turned your back to it, and then you didn't even include it in the site plan. And I, to me, when you made that effort to do this, it could really be something celebrated, honestly, like, it, it, that could bring a lot of the community to your project, instead of kind of creating a wall of commercial along, along forty-two. If, if you're celebrating that there's a park in here, then you're going to get community come to here for the park, and now you've got people walking around who may, you know, use restaurants, or ice cream shop, or, or whatever else. I mean, I mean, even the hotel, if there's a hotel there, to me, that's an amenity, that it's, there's a park right next door.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think a lot more thought and care needs to be brought into the site plan to, to really finish the deed for, for the park.
Yeah, if, if I could, I, I very much hear you, but also I kind of change the narrative a little bit. Not having a line on here for a bike path, if you want to blame that on me, because this is, this is my personal illustration work, so I do this. But let me tell you what we've really done in thinking this through. The Rails to Trails stops out by the, the cemetery, off Cemetery Road, it, it's had trouble getting through the quarry for years. Our project in, on the south side town, the Hamlet project, the bridge there is owned by Metro Parks, the rail bridge, and they own a piece of. So when we found that out and we started doing that project, we went to, to meet with Metro Parks folks, know the director pretty well, and, and came to a conclusion that it shouldn't just be how do you get into Plain City, it's how do you actually get all the way around Plain City on a bike trail? And so we started talking to landowners all the way along Darby Creek with the suggestion of, because a lot of that's floodplain land, and they're paying taxes on land that are being used, and so we've, we have all along talked to folks about what might it take to acquire land all the way along to include in the thirty-nine acres a year that was given, and structure a bike trail that becomes a linear park all the way along Darby Creek? So, why it's not on this particular plan is our heads way above that. We're actually thinking about how can we help facilitate getting that all the way? And then, once it gets close to this site, where's the exit? So, we, it's not that we've ignored it at all, far from that, it's just a matter of, as it comes into moving the chess pieces around in this particular property, where's the right place for it to come in, where's the right place for it to cross forty-two? We just aren't all there yet to get...
I don't, I don't think the comment was really made about the bike path, per se. It, it's, where I was trying to go with that is really more of a celebration of a donation of a park, of an aspect, as an amenity, right? I mean, to me, the bike path is definitely going to be great, but you've, you provided thirty-nine acres that the community now has access to.
Now, here's, here's this hurdle there. The hurdle there is the EPA, in their last round of nationwide permitting, had now a permanent, nationwide permit for the Darby watershed. So those thirty-nine acres are highly controlled in terms of development of those acreage, even for parking. So running, running a bike path through it, you can, to a certain degree, get away with that, there's some issues about if you run a bike path, you've now cut off the riparian flow line, and there's issues. So, another reason why we haven't gone in-depth about where it routes, because that's going to be a bit of negotiation with the EPA on how it routes through that area, because it's in that protected zone. So, there's a lot more to be done, including, MKSK, your guys, to really, it's not just put a line on paper, it's what can really happen, because there's a lot of layers to it. So, again, I, I, we could have put something on paper, maybe we should have, but it, we're, we have lots of other dialogue going on about how we get that done, so.
So, we have, this, this property's actually been ours for quite some time now. This has been done, how many, how many years ago?
I want to say...
Twenty years?
It's been a while.
Yeah, we've had it, we just haven't been able to access it.
Mr. Valentine, who owns the property, is the one that donated it to us. But part of that agreement was that it was to be used as, as for when this develops, so that's kind of where we are today. So we do have a master trust plan that we're working on now, and we do have trails to have there, giving the EPA and the Big Darby, they're likely not going to be paid, unfortunately, we just can't pay them in there. So there will be some type of trails in there. But, yeah, I, I mean, the goal, I came from the beginning, working with Mr. McCabe, is, is there will be connections to...
Sure.
Right now, it's just to be able, we don't have access to it now.
Right.
So this is going to provide us access to that. And I, I foresee a partnership in that, and on how we create that entry, and how we, I think that, I think your comment will be a group effort of how we promote that park from within this development.
That's, that's really what the comment's about.
Yeah, we agree with you, a hundred percent.
I like the plan, I think it's one of the more well-funded ones that we've had him across for that space, and one of those. One thing I'd like to see is some of those schedules, four hundred baseball games, is that thirteen acres have about four baseballs. You see a connection there, or somebody's got to figure it out every time it rains?
Yeah.
We have nowhere to put all these kids, and more kids coming? That'd be a really good spot for four or five baseball fields, but no, I, I think it's a good plan.
Just for kicks to gauge it a little bit, I picked up the visual fields and put it on here. You can get all the visual fields, plus the appropriate parkings, if you don't want soccer, you want baseball. I get it.
Baseballs, that's town.
Yeah, but you're right, there's, all those opportunities exist, so.
Any other questions?
I was going to say one other thing, I, I did, they receive your staff reports, I thought that was very well-written, I agree with all the points. I don't know if the group has gotten a chance to read all that, I, I just strongly agree with everything that you said, and don't even bother...
We had a great meeting today to go over those staff reports, and we're aligned, we're on the same page here.
Yeah.
I think when we get to the final development plan, you know, when we get a little more detail, the, the development text, you'll see a lot of the items, a lot of the uses that, that are not envisioned in there. Sidewalks, you'll see a little more of that information in that zoning text when we get to the final part, so.
I would like to comment, too, we got the engineering report as well, and I talked to her a great event, over length about it. Some of the language in there that's about the setbacks and such, he, he had to put that in there, because that's what the, the stipulation is for both Plain City and for EPA, so that's the way it is written, and so he had to document that just to his job for now. But what's also in play here is that donation that involved, involved the Department of Natural Resources and EPA at the time it was done. There's some little bit of grandfathering that will take place to make this plan function, and we've had two really good meetings with the IPA. What they don't do typically is give you a write-up of that in advance, what they want is the plan, when it's time to submit it, it gets submitted, and then they will approve it based on the dialogue we've had to date. So, some of those things, just don't let them kind of distract from this plan. This plan can go, it's just timing when you get those approvals. We kind of did the same thing on the Hamlet on the south side town, it was a, kind of how the wet, or the floodplain worked and all there, it was the same thing, so.
Any other questions?
No, I, I do agree with your point, I personally don't see how a hotel fits in this, it's just my personal opinion, so maybe in time I'll see how it fits, but I just, I just don't see it. Anything else I love, I just don't see how it fits, I just, it's like a, I don't know, it just...
It's a very...
Strapped from everything that's there that's good. You asked where a hotel, I think a hotel would go on the east side town, one sixty-one out there, and there are people that can't get a hotel in Dublin, they get a hotel here, and I, I just don't, I don't get it.
Yeah, the, the traffic on one sixty-one is all commuter traffic from Plain City. Nobody's staying in a hotel, just drives back and forth to work. So what the hotel people are saying is, if there's going to be one in Plain City, it has to be on forty-two.
Well, that's unless people build, build houses, or fields, you'll know that's not coming.
Yeah, but again, that's weekend hotel traffic, it's not weekday hotel traffic.
That's for weekend hotels.
I just don't want it to be a seventy and forty-two.
I'm sorry?
I don't want to be a seventy and forty-two, I'm going to say it, it's not conducive, there's a lot of, you know, Ohio is number four in human trafficking, and for me personally, I think that it's just something that, when we look at our town and the future of it, I mean, it, it could go somewhere, but it's just right in the heart of it, next to a park, it just does not sit right with me, Mr. McCabe.
It's not the driver of this project. The hotel was something that just came to us, that's why it wasn't the original plan. So it came to us through someone who's had discussions with the community, saying the hotel was wanted. So if a hotel isn't wanted, we're all ears, we get that, and there's certainly lots of other uses that come back for that space, so if that's, if that's a hurdle, we're not here to make hurdles. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any, and I know there's people that have signed in to speak, so I was looking back at the rezoning, but there's no public...
Well, we're ahead of public hearing, we're ahead of public hearing.
No, I'm sorry, public, oh yes, public hearing, okay, just wanted to make sure that everybody's voices were heard that had signed in.
Yeah, no one's...
Okay, just making sure, okay. Just don't want to stifle someone's voice. Okay, so with that, thank you very much. So, RZ dash twenty-five dash two, rezoning of fifty-seven point nine-one acres at zero State Route forty-two, parcel number eighteen dash zero 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 one one seven three from restricted industrial district, I one to planned unit development, PUD applicant Dwight McCabe, Dublin Cause Gray LLC, is there a motion to, yeah?
Could I ask a quick question? That means we are just changing the zoning to a PUD, or does that mean we are approving the PUD?
No, it's just, it's just, it's like a blanket PUD, you got a development text is approved, will approve the, the uses that...
Got it, okay.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the rezoning?
I'll make a motion to approve RZ twenty-five dash two.
It's your second?
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Twain?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Yes. RZ dash twenty-five dash two is approved. R Z dash twenty-five dash two is approved, rezoning is approved. R Z dash twenty-five dash three, rezoning of point six-five acres at three seventy North Chillicothe Street, parcel number eighteen dash zero 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 one one six seven, point zero zero one zero, from restricted industrial district I one to planned unit development, P U D applicant Dwight McCabe, Dublin Cos Gray LLC. Is there a motion to approve the rezoning?
I'll make a motion to approve R Z twenty-five dash three.
Second?
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. McQuaid?
Yes.
Mr. Swain?
Yes.
Mayor Cardy?
Yes. R Z dash twenty-five dash three is approved, and P, moving into P U D dash twenty-five dash two, preliminary development plan, US forty-two north, applicant Dwight McCabe, and this is where we want to approve with conditions of staff M O's, is that, I, I'll make a motion to approve P U D dash twenty-five dash two pending staff report.
I'll second.
Mr. Swain?
Pending staff report.
So, approving a preliminary is not, we're not, it's, it's kind, it's kind of odd saying approving a preliminary, because we're not approving the development text, we're not approving the plans. It's, it's the green light to go to the final. So, the final plan, final development plan is going to be the final approved plan. So, this is, this is more, so far, so good with what comments received, everything that the developer was given tonight, is what we're going to work in staff, we're working with them getting to the final, so everything that we discussed tonight will hopefully be on that final.
Okay.
So, that final approval or denial will be the final plan.
Like the spot where they can start.
Just approval tonight is not, is we're not approving the uses, we're not approving those tonight, this is just the green light to go to our full, the final.
Okay, thank you. So, yes.
Mr. McQuaid?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mayor Cardy?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
P U D dash twenty-five dash two is approved. Okay, moving into number eight on our agenda, public hearing for Z C dash twenty-five dash fourteen. Is there anyone here to speak on Z C dash twenty-five dash fourteen? Thank you. I will now close the public hearing for Z C dash twenty-five dash fourteen at seven twenty-four. And Z C dash twenty-five dash fourteen zoning code amendment, chapter eleven eighty-three point one-two, fences of part eleven of the planning and zoning code.
So, we have for tonight is a revision to a fairly recent zoning code change that we made to fences. Diana of our, of our group here is probably more familiar with this one. So, we did a fence code change, and then we did get a number of, this really pertains to corner lots, and some of our newer developments haven't come in for, for variance requests. So, we've had, we had some for you, and we, we've at least had half a dozen or more in the past, less than a year. So, you know, so that, what that tells us is we need to reevaluate. So, this is a perfect timing, because we're also going to start introducing graphics and more diagrams and stuff in our code, so these are more visuals, so not only can you read and try to understand, now you have something to look at to help you understand what those are. So, this is, so this is based off of corner lots is, is the, is the change. Right now, the way the code was written, it's to the rear corner of the house, so where this cursor is there, that's, it, it cannot go, so that example, it couldn't go to the east, or it couldn't go to the north, go back to that left block there. So, it, it couldn't go any further west, and it can't go any further north of that corner. So, a lot of our newer developments have a lot of setbacks, and on those corners, those are front yards. Corner lots don't have it back there, they have two front yards and they have two side yards. So, but what we're noticing is the setbacks are so far great, and the building lines are so far back, that we could actually, in the past numerous variances we've granted have been ten foot out. So, what we're doing, proposing is, just to make it a little more easy, don't go fifteen feet from the sidewalk, so if your home is set thirty feet back, you can go fifteen feet, you know, as you maintain that fifteen foot. So, that, what that will do, though, the last six or seven that we approved, they, they would then be in compliance, so we're all going to cut down on our variances. These do not, they will not create a site variance or a site destruction, and if they did, they, they wouldn't be able to do it anyways, even if, even if that's fifteen foot, which this really will only apply to our new developments, our older existing neighborhoods. It, it's still the same, but those buildings set well within that range, so they're not going to go any further in the area anyways. So, this is really, this, this revision was for corner lots pertaining to further setbacks from the right way and adding some visuals.
We went from ten to fifteen?
No, so it, it, so what we did was, what we had been improving was ten, and it was still roughly fifteen feet from the property, because these are twenty-five foot setbacks. So, it was easier, because we didn't have some homes that do set a little bit further back, so instead, that ten foot, it's easier to go, it was just easier to say fifteen feet from the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, if your house is a little bit back, you might be able to go twelve feet, you might be able to go fifteen feet, you just got to maintain at least that fifteen feet from the sidewalk. Kind of that's.
Yeah, like some of the more recent ones, we reviewed that setback, sometimes twenty-six feet, twenty-eight feet, yeah, this is very from that right way, from that sidewalk.
Yeah. We're still not allowed to really come forward to the front of the house, but we still need to stay at least to the rear of that build line, just to maintain consistency, aesthetics.
Yeah.
And try to keep it out that front, but one of the two front yards.
The graphics are very helpful.
Yeah, definitely, graphics are the best.
So, we're going to be adding those to all the aspects of the zoning code, so you'll, you'll start seeing a lot of those, so we had a record number of breaking, number of code changes this year. Expect to see them next year, but these are just clean, these are items that just need to be updated and cleaned, but this is going to be one of them, is adding more graphics to our code.
So, with that, is there a motion to approve Z C dash twenty-five dash fourteen?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mayor Cardy?
Yes.
Mr. Swain?
Yes.
Mr. McQuaid?
Yes. Z C dash twenty-five dash fourteen is approved, and we do not have any discussion items, so we will be back here third Wednesday in September, which is the seventeenth, at five thirty P M. So, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn, if there are a second.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned.